All right, let's call this meeting of the Wayne County Commissioners to a quarter. First up is Mike Sharp.
I just wanted to take one moment and recognize Mark Gerard. So forty years ago today, July 5th, 1983, Mark Gerard started his term as a full-time employee out of the Highway Department. And he's put a lot of sweat and even some blood and some hard work into Wayne County. And so I wanted to congratulate him on forty years of service and recognize him today.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still haven't learned yet, have you?
No. You know.
So that was the big thing I wanted to bring. The other thing is, last week he opened up truck bids for a tandem truck. This will be for 2024. Well, I had one bid that came in, it was from Stoops Freightliner. The price of the bid is $156,678 for a freightliner. We've got one truck that we're going to trade in at a value of $5,500. So the final price would be $151,178. So it's $1,214 more than what we paid for this year's trucks.
Less of an increase than I expected.
And it should come in, like, first part of January is when this one's looking to come in. I said I wanted it after January for next year's money. But it's looking to be building that fourth quarter. So my recommendation is to go with this truck.
Move for approval.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the bid from Stoops Freightliner for the final value after trade-in, $151,178, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One more thing.
Congratulations on forty years.
Thank you.
One more thing.
So we've got an employee that we've decided are kind of mutually parting ways.
Is it Mark?
No, no, not Mark, another employee. So this is a request to replace that truck driver.
Okay, we have a request to refill a truck driver position.
Move for approval.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Now, if I am, I'm going to give them anything.
Anything for Mike?
I just want to acknowledge that forty-year commitment to, you know, there's been some very hot days and some very challenging weather that you've been up against and leading a qualified team of men has been challenging as well. It's the weather and we really appreciate your leadership and your loyalty over these forty years.
Thank you.
Leading a great team and worked with us.
Great group of guys.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for your leadership.
You want this back now, don't you? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Cross.
We have a whole lot. This is just enough, just a draft for review and consideration and when it becomes appropriate.
Okay. Do you remember we asked Mr. Cross to draft a letter to Welk here about the lease of that facility? So this is his first draft.
And I think-
Make sure that Brad gets a copy since he's not here today.
Yeah, and it's not going to go out until you authorize it to go out. And I'm not sure, I think it might be, timing-wise, a little bit mature.
Sure.
But I have researched, I think, Indiana case law is pretty solid behind us in what the language and the lease, as it related to the potential second option period, was really nothing more than what the law calls an agreement to agree and therefore-
Question me about-
-unenforceable, void for lack of specificity of terms.
Okay.
So, you know, a court based with it would be forced to assume terms, parties to agrees. I think if it comes to that, I'm very confident that that's, our position is legally valid. You know, again, I recognize there's some balloons, if you will, still in the air that need to be somewhat resolved.
Okay.
Secondly, I think we, update, Marianne, Jeff and I had a conference call, it was Zoom or whatever we had, I don't know, with SRI folks, was that Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I just, just like five, ten minutes before I left the office just now, just a party to a stream of emails between Mr. Porter and Matt Porter, the attorney for SRI, and Mike Shipman. Basically, to sum it up, Shipman says he typically will not get involved unless until there's an investigatory report that's filed. So I think the next step is to get the sheriff-
Sheriff.
He had deputies there, I think, in the videos, and so that would be the next step. And as far as that, as far as implications for what happened when we tried to first- Secondly, I don't have time to do it over the weekend with family. I'm putting together a template and I think Matt is going to look at it. And it'll have some blanks you need to fill in. But one of the issues is to require a minimum cash, which would be cash or cash equivalent, deposit payable to Wayne County, Indiana, tendered at the time you get your-
Your bid number.
Your bid number.
Okay.
And then, at least for deed sales, I think it's a little iffy if we can do that in tax sales.
And she could help if she was on vacation.
What about that?
And then, Marianne's suggestion, I think, which everybody kind of embraced, is to how devil be in how to do it. But I think at the end of the first phase of the auction, when all properties have been stricken, there'd be a recess for thirty, thirty-five, whatever, however long it takes the bidders to go and finally settle. If they, if they can't do that on that day, then that, the auction will stay open and that property will be put back up. And that'll be announced both in the notice and at the outset of the auction. So those are two issues that I think you need to think about. I don't know, nothing magic about the number, you know, just some skittering game.
And I'll tell you that their strong preference was to do an online auction. And we told them that our preference would be an in-person auction. So they're going to work through their recommendations. Did you receive their recommendations yet or just-
Not yet. I really didn't expect to, for maybe the latter part of this week.
Yeah, because of the holiday weekend.
And I think, as important, I was concerned about getting something for the enforcement piece for what happened at our deed sale, because I knew that's-
Exactly.
I said, I'm not a criminal lawyer, or I should say, I don't practice criminal law. But I'm-
Neither are you a criminal lawyer.
Semantics. But I do believe that there is a violation of certainly federal laws and perhaps certain state, perhaps federal, what transpired. So we'll go from there and whatever. Meanwhile, we'll start working on the rescheduling of the properties. I think there was some discussion about offering, I don't know how many, to bidding owners.
And Steve, didn't you say that statute only allows you to do that if they are resident owners?
That's why I recall when we looked at it before, if they, if it's a rental, that doesn't apply.
I'm not sure that's the case. I'll have to look at the definition. But the definition of a bidding owner is just clearly stated.
Okay, so if you can check on that, do you have any initial thoughts on whether we-
And I think, from what I understood, if we're going to do that, we really don't want to take away from the next live auction, so to speak.
Afterwards, if we have properties we need-
But if we can do that with unimproved, probably-
My thought was if we could do it with the empty lots, the vacant lots that we have to take care of now, we have to keep mowing them, that there is little likelihood that there's going to be a bidding war for a twenty-five-foot-wide vacant lot in downtown Richmond, or any part of Richmond for that matter. And so we probably should try to move in that direction so that title passes to somebody as quickly as possible.
Occasionally, though, there is some bare ground that has value. I'm not, I haven't visited all of them.
These are not-
There's not one that has some appeal?
These that we left in this year would be not pristine lots.
They would only have appeal to adjacent ownership.
And there are some that are currently mowing it, or at least somebody's mowing it.
But even, even then, they may not have any interest because it becomes-
Most of them are not developable, as lots, based on their size.
Right, you know, generally, they're too, if they'd had a house on them and the lot was too small now with current zoning requirements, it makes it an unbillable lot unless they get a variance.
So maybe they could put a swing set?
Yeah, sure.
Or a kiddie pool?
They have more room for their dog to run or whatever.
But it's not developable. None of, I just hadn't visited those bare ground.
And we're not going to make a decision today on that. So if you want to, if you want to take-
No, I take your word for it.
Those pictures I viewed a couple of weeks ago shows those lots.
Oh, you showed all the bare ground, too? I was focusing on the structures more than the bare ground. Well, yeah, I don't have any problem with the bare ground, but, which leads to the point, I think any cash deposit to get a paddle should be no more than what the minimum bid is possible to be. You know, if we leave any hundred-dollar properties in, the paddle deposit should be a hundred dollars. If the lowest bid is five hundred dollars, then the, you know, it should be no more than five hundred dollars deposit.
That's what we discussed.
So you're, we're like, and as far as an online sale is, you know, some of our bidders might not be adept at actually making a wire transfer, and those are pretty costly from a bank. It adds cost to the buyer to do an immediate wire transfer, an ACH, that sort of thing. And we really want to have this deed sale closed out that day.
I agree.
And so that's just another argument for having a live auction.
I think we're fine and that they're willing to go in that direction. Anything else, Ron?
Not right now.
Okay, so Steve, let's, let's go to the-
Lisa, you want to come up and join us if you want to? Join the crowd?
I don't know. Do you guys bite or anything?
We've had our shots.
Yeah, we've had our shots.
This is Lisa Crosby.
Crosley.
I'm sorry.
Crosley.
Turner has been doing the square body truck show at the fairgrounds. And a couple of years ago, commissioners agreed to a lower-cost rental fee, and that was just for a two-year period. The first year was twelve hundred, last year it was fifteen hundred. And then I invited Lisa to come back today and explain again, first of all, to explain the event, and then where you make a donation to.
Okay, so to tell you a little bit about how the truck event started. My family loves the old square body trucks. And I don't know if you know what a square body truck is. It's a 1973 to 87 Mayling Chevrolet truck, Chevrolet or GMC. So this is our eighth year having such an event for the square body part. We started at our house, my husband got on Facebook, invited anybody who had a square body to come. We had twenty trucks at our house the first year. By year number three, we had ninety-one trucks and we had to do something different. So year number three, just so happens, I am also a 4H leader and now a barn superintendent. But one of the, my families was there and they said, well, why can't we do this as a 4H event and have 4H sell food? Because what had happened at that time, I am the leader of the goat club. Well, there used to be a dairy goat show at the fairgrounds and our club provided the food, the breakfast and the lunch, and she ran the food booth. So it turned into a 4H event. So we had it at the fairgrounds at that time, because it was 4H, we didn't pay for the grounds. And at that time, we started charging a fee because I knew at some point we would end up taking it over. The problem with 4H running it is, obviously, if someone comes in and wants to pay for the fairgrounds, we get booted out. The problem is, it's grown enough, we have people over the last couple of years, they've come from Maryland, they've come from, last year we had Nebraska, and the last, the farthest one last year actually drove a truck from South Dakota. So, I mean, these people are coming from all across the country to this event now. So it's one of those things that once we put it on the calendar, we need to stick to it. But anyway, to go back to the 4H side, so we had it under the 4H blanket until two years ago when we went out on our own. And that way, we could also, with it not being a technical 4H event, we can handle a fifty-fifty drawing, you know, we can raise some money that way. So what happened, when we, when we did it, our helpers outside of our family are 4H people. So we tell them, like, I think last year, every hour that they worked, they got ten dollars credit. Almost everybody donates it back to the 4H, so it goes into the club. We have a couple, like a married couple, that they prefer the money, which, you know, so I have a handful of people I give, I pay, to come and, and help us run this event. And then the last two years, we also had the Greensport Fire Department came. They served food and last year they helped us at the gate. So we, we have people running the gate, and then we have a small merchandise booth inside the Raper Center, is what we did last year anyway. But we were just wondering if we could continue some sort of a discount program. The reasoning, I do have figures here for the last two years. One year we made a little money, last year we lost money. Part of that is our expenses, some of the supplies and type of thing, you know, we update each year for the show. We don't charge a lot. We charged, I know this year the, the amount went up. Let me back up for a second. Also, this is our third year, we started the Midwest Truck Nationals to go along with the square body part. So we actually, the square bodies is just a gathering of, no matter what kind of truck you have, just come bring your truck, come talk trucks, that's all it's about. No, no pressure. Well, then we started the GM Truck Show also. So there, there's more or less two events going on at the same time. So on Saturday, if they want their truck to be judged, so for the Midwest Truck Show, it is all GM trucks, any year a truck, but it has to be Chevrolet or GMC. If they want to be judged, they pay ten dollars more and then they have to drive their truck around and go through an actual judging. And then we gave awards away. So we have an award ceremony on Saturday. So, you know, trying to make this a bigger event, last year, we actually had, we hired a young man from southern Indiana to come in and sing. The problem is, on Friday night, we scheduled a cruise. It's not really a parade, but at 6:30, we have a meeting, we all get in our trucks and we go to the east side of town. So the town is full of pickup trucks. And it was really something last year, because I think there were like a hundred and fifty trucks that participated in this parade, if you want to call it that. But anyway, so because I, we picked everybody up and sent them to the east side of town, there was no one there for the concert. You know, so we kind of shot ourselves in the foot. But, I mean, you know, I'm telling you that just because Wayne County Tourism kind of got involved last year. They came in, brought us food, you know, had gifts and donations and all that. And so kind of part of that is, we're getting people out to the restaurants and the shopping on the east side of town. So it's not just the fairgrounds and our event. The purpose of our event is not to make money, it's to have a good time and to get people to come in and share in the things that we enjoy. And along the way, I feel like we're kind of promoting the fairgrounds, we're promoting Wayne County, what Wayne County has to offer. The parade, like I said, everybody, most of us parked at the mall, and we took up the whole front, like there in front of where Office Max is. By the time I got there, I mean, it was pretty full. But it, it was neat to see all the trucks go by and they were humping and waving, but, I mean, the restaurants were just full of old trucks on Friday morning.
So how many did you have last year?
Okay, that is the, the thing. It's really hard to get an accurate number. We try to get everyone to register their trucks regardless if they're going to be in the show or not. So we had roughly, it was a little over two hundred people that actually registered, but as far as trucks, we tried to go through, we have photographers taking pictures all weekend. Our best guess is between five and six hundred pickup trucks. So, I mean, it, it's a big turnout. There are a lot of local people, but it's more, like I said, there's more people coming in. Since we went to the fairgrounds, CK Magazine, they're, the gentleman who started CK Magazine comes in and they've been taking pictures. So the last several years, we've had like a four or five-page spread of all the trucks. All they, they really don't do a story, they just do photos from our show. And that's kind of helped increase people to come, they, they like to get their picture in a magazine. But, I mean, it, it's, it's a big deal, it's kind of a big deal. And if you guys want to look at the numbers, I have what our numbers were for the last two years, if you, I mean.
Sure, if you want to pass them around.
I just have the one copy, so I guess.
Do you want to summarize them, since there's only one copy? Can you summarize the?
Um, okay, well, the one year we had-
The donations, because, you know, when we give a discount, it's, you know, if it supports utter chaos, what you were able to give back to the goat club.
That's part of what I have highlighted there. Okay, so in 2021, they've got twenty, or two thousand plus three ninety-one plus five seventy-one. What, there's a gentleman who makes a raffle item and we handled the raffle and then donated the money to the club. So all the money that goes with that raffle goes directly to them.
However you do it, you don't need the specifics, but, but the discount, you know, a lot of people ask for discount and you're one of very few that were able to get it.
So, and then, so I guess, that, that's close to three thousand the first year, and then last year, they ended up with over sixteen, a little over sixteen hundred. And then the fire department got a hundred and sixty-two, and then our other workers got six hundred. So that's why, you know, our workers ended up taking more money than, than normally we go to our foragers.
Inflation probably.
But last year, we also lost money, so, you know.
Even though you lost money, you still donated to the club.
Yeah, because we had people work, we logged their hours.
But that's counted as their expenses, is the donations.
Yeah, that's part of the, yeah.
So without that-
So your donation, without the donation, maybe you'd have broke even?
Um, it would have been pretty close, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was guessing that probably could have-
And the year before, they, they made money after accounting for the donation.
Yeah, so, and part of this last year, if you probably don't know, but it rained. So the weather pays a big part.
Sure, sure.
When it rains, people don't come. They, they say, we're not taking the truck out.
But you used, you used the fairgrounds for three days, is that right?
Okay, so last year, we only, we opened it up where people came in on Friday after lunch. Today, or this year, we were hoping to open it up Friday morning, have it open Friday and Saturday, and everybody's normally gone by about five o'clock on Saturday.
Okay, so it's only two days.
Because we do the awards, we do the awards at three o'clock. By the time you take pictures, I mean, people pretty much disperse.
Okay.
It's two days, and the only thing, most people like to park, like where the antique tractors park and where the campers park, that's where the square bodies normally go. And then the show trucks kind of go up on toward where the carnival is.
Okay.
And then we have food vendors, where the food vendors would be. We have three or four trucks. And then the, the Greensport Fire Department did our, did a food booth last year. They don't want to do it this year. So we've got Centerville lined up. The only thing is, Centerville would really like to use the goat, or the sheep barn. Something about the auxiliary lady would like to have a building with walls. And I said, well, you know, normally there's nothing in the sheep barn, maybe we could open it up and they could set their food up in there. That one, they leave on Friday night, they can shut the building up and all their stuff is there. I don't think she wanted a tent, she wanted a wall.
And when are you thinking, what are your dates for this year?
Our dates this year are August 4th and 5th. Because Brad put us down for the calendar, and I didn't realize that the contract expired last year, or it would have been here before now.
Steve, as you know, I guess, a couple of questions. Would it be better served if the donation went directly to 4H rather than a specific club?
I don't know, that's up to you. The only reason it goes to the club, it's normally our club members that are the ones that are helping. And I'll tell you, okay, because you don't know about the 4H side of things, when you go to the fair and all the other species, the extension office generally plays for their awards. Now, they're, they, they do ask for donations to help support their trophies and that kind of thing. The goat club, for many years, has paid for our own awards. So we pay for our own awards and we've done some things, you know, within the goat barn, where we pay for our own things rather than ask 4H to do it, if that makes-
How many kids are involved?
I think this last year, we had sixty-seven kids in our club. So, and I know the goat project was, has been growing, we had a hundred and sixty-seven animals at the fair this year. And I would say ninety to ninety-five percent of the kids belong to the club.
And then, after the event, do you clean up or do we clean up?
We clean up everything. Brad said he wants everything in the dumpsters. We put dumpsters back where they can pick them up. We went around on Sunday and cleaned stuff up and locked things back up, so.
I think your, your volunteer spirit would be somewhat reduced if it went into the 4H foundation or 4H as a whole, don't you think?
Yeah, it's hard to get, even get the people to commit, to come in. So there's a hard, there's just a core group and they enjoy the pickup trucks, too. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a short audience of people wanting to help. And school starts about that time, so either people are going off to college or whatever.
There's, because goat people, for some reason, also have pickup trucks. So there's some overlap, shared passions, if you will.
Well, and the thing about, we have the 4H club and then with the volunteer fire department, it's kind of a dual thing to have the fire department come in and do the booth. That way, there is emergency people on, on the fairgrounds, because we do pay for the police officers to be there overnight, because there are some high-dollar trucks that'll come in.
So you have security there?
Yeah, if we're not there, last year on Saturday, we had security there all day. I'm not sure if Tim plans on having them there during the day. It just kind of helps just to make sure. But at, at night especially, we have someone there because, you know, the trucks are left.
Well, as you know, since, you know, Haley's come on board, we're, our group, our committee has been looking at trying to have some standardized leasing charge for not-for-profits. And you've not had an opportunity to prove that or discuss it. I think the proposed fee for the fairground, for all the fairgrounds for not-for-profits, you know, with certain criteria, is going to be two thousand dollars versus thirty-three hundred, I think.
And is that per day or for the, for the weekend? Is it per day?
It's per day.
But that needs to be defined, too, because-
Yeah, and that's, that's for another, that's a part of-
That's another discussion.
That's part of the discussion, you know, the cleanup, the tear down, and, and right now, we don't have any criteria for that. The, the previous agreement that you had with the folks was, was for the, because remember, it started out to be one day and then they stretched it into two, but-
Yeah, some of the Coleman Center people think a day is three days.
Well, again, and that is-
It is clearly not.
It's clearly not, even in the eclipse year, it will not be, so.
Or leap year.
But I think the arrangement for the last two years has been a flat fee of, one was twelve hundred, the other was fifteen hundred. I think she's indicated the first year it was one day and the next one was two, and then they're out of there by the, by the evening of the second day.
You know, in the interest of, because the time is short, I would propose that we do a one-year contract for fifteen hundred dollars for Friday and Saturday, whatever those days were in August. Uh, and, and that, next time then, check with us this fall, and we'll, we, we'll have a chance to talk with Haley about, you know, what should the policy be? But you, you need to know today, if we're going to have an event in a month.
Well, that's why, um, my next question is, how, how quick can we know about next year? Just because we try to go ahead and, and, and kind of let people know, even at, at this event, if we had a date.
The commissioner will start talking about those fees this month on the nineteenth. And I would assume they'll make some decision within the following month, so you should know, uh, probably before your truck shows.
Pretty close to, to the time of your truck show, if we, and we can push it to, at least, at the very least, I would say we could do a one-year commitment for you guys until we're, if we have a problem working out the details.
Yeah, that would be great.
You ideally would like to announce the twenty twenty-four date in August, next month.
Right.
So I think we could lock in a date with an asterisk. You could get out of it if we go to a nonprofit rate that's just way too high.
Right, because, um, that's what Brad had originally told me, you know, as long as, he knew he would pencil us in, but I know things are change, changing as time goes on.
Well, hopefully, you know, we're, we, we fired Haley Baker, and hopefully her labor will, will bear some additional rentals, and it will be busier out there.
Right.
But, uh.
Have you met Haley? Do, do you know her from four H?
I, I know her from four H. I think Michaela was, I can't remember if she was the queen or the, um, second runner-up, and she was like the teen queen maybe at that time.
Okay, yeah, she was very active in four H, so.
Yep.
We're glad to get her back from Montana.
So if, if you're agreeable, we'll, we'll give you a one-year commitment for, for August the.
Fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth, um, for this year at fifteen hundred dollars, the same as last year.
So is it okay if we go ahead and op, have Brad open up the sheep barn for us that we've been for, for our, our department?
As long as you clean it up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be kind of part of their deal.
We're certainly not making any money off of this.
Right.
It's not high demand.
Expenses, but I think that'll be fine as long as you will clean it up as you, as you leave.
Yeah, we were really surprised, um, I think last year when we went to clean up, everybody did a really good job. I mean, we did send out our worker bees Saturday night and clean up, and then we came back Sunday just to make sure everybody was gone and everything, you know. We had a couple of the Rosie Rollers that were overflowing. They had trash beside it, but otherwise it was.
Good, good.
People were respectful.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm just glad that the people who came were respectful.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I move that we, uh, grant, uh, a one-year agreement, uh, for you, uh, for the same amount of fifteen hundred dollars, and, uh, future will be decided.
Right.
I'll second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So would it be okay if I come in and, and get that settled up with you later on this week, or?
I'm going to text Brad today, and you can settle up with, you can finish it with him.
Just, okay, that, that'll be fine.
Yep.
Good. Thank you for coming in.
Unless, I wish we could pass a, a ordinance that does not allow it to rain on August fourth and fifth.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Well, I think we could, but I'm not sure it would work. Don't think our power extends that far, Mary.
Our enforcement authorities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Okay, uh, Stephen?
Yeah, just, just to follow up on that, you'll be receiving a, a copy of that proposed, uh, rental fee agreement, rental fee list, uh, in your mailbox. And I don't know what the nineteenth is going to look like for us, but, uh, surely we'll have enough time. But is it your thought we want to be with the council during those budget things, or?
During, during our part of the budget, you know, our departments and, and the commissioner's budget.
And, you know, if we can have a short meeting, you know, keep our.
Anyway, so you'll have, you'll have those proposed fee lists, rental lists, as well as a questionnaire that Haley's put together that questions, some standardized questions that you might ask of a potential person wanting to, uh, ask for that not-for-profit rate. And, uh, I, I, I think it's a good starting point.
Good.
Are you going to try to incorporate the alcohol policy into that?
Yep. And we're, well, also, she's working on some bullet points, if you will, for you to look at, that we think should be in the contract.
I was curious that you, that Brad is still handling bookings and payments and stuff like that?
No, he just.
Because you said, oh, he started with it.
She's, she's dealt with him, and she's named Brad, and Haley's been involved in this one, but.
Okay.
She started with Brad, and Brad knows the backstory.
He's grandfathered, okay.
Well, he knows the backstory of this one, and, no, but Haley's been.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that he's still not.
Yeah, because she probably didn't realize that Haley was doing it anyway, so.
Okay.
All right, and then, uh, I passed out the list of the projects this morning. I know, Mary, you didn't get a chance to hear it. Not much change from, from last, uh, week. Um, I did get a follow-up from, uh, Peter Mechanical on the air conditioning at the Coleman. They're going to have it hooked up and functional one way or the other before the weekend. If it's temporary, it'll be a flexible, uh, hose going into it. Unless the fabricator has the duct work done to hook it up, but.
All three units?
No, just, just the one serving the offices. The, the main hall's still working, and, and it's, you know, on a good day, he thought it would take about a week for get the install, installation, except for this duct work, so we don't want to pull down the main hall.
So they're going to, they're going to order the duct work before they start installation for the back?
Yeah, they'll, they'll scope it out before, rather than take it out and then say, whoops, we need to, we need to make some duct work.
Okay.
Yep. And then you see Joe's here in the, in the room today, and I think he was running some wire for something. There's wires hanging down, and I think that's actually for the TV wires, right?
Yeah.
And then I passed out to you, uh, remember, we talked about the eclipse coming up, um, next year? And the Tourism Bureau has a really active committee, and has been coordinating with, uh, all the communities with their events. And this is the events planned thus far, up to date, as of the end of June. And, and then the county's, uh, Public Safety Committee, we met last week, with Sheriff's Department, EMA, myself, fire departments. And we will be tying in representation from that committee with the tourism's, uh, committee. So, um, this group from the tourism, they're being monthly, I believe, is what they're doing. Anyway, that's, there's been contact with the schools. Hagerstown has already canceled school for that day. Richmond is on an e-learning day that day. And Northeastern and Centerville have a, and Lincoln haven't made a decision yet.
Okay.
And then I did, I did make council aware of, um, the shortfall that it will be, that's there. It will be, should, you know, all these projects that they've approved at this point, in that appropriation that, that, for the one-time expenditures. Because remember, we didn't get encumbered money put into that, so they've been made aware of that. And I told them that we'll probably give them a pretty regular update so they can keep track of that. Thinking that probably around October, first of November, they would need to look at a transfer or additional appropriation or something.
You mentioned the K-12 schools, but I sure hope somebody has contacted Head Start.
Yeah.
Because the three and four-year-olds really must not be trapped on those Head Start classes.
Yeah, that, that's was part of our discussion in our, in our Public Safety Committee. Daycares, Head Start, uh, anything, you know, that kids normally would be transported to on a daily basis.
There's a lot of those little Head Start buses running around, because it's full day, Head Start now.
We actually had a, a lady there talking to us that had attended the last one out in Casper, Wyoming. And, and some of the things you don't even think about occurring, um, people running out of gas, people coming to the event, not planning on the amount of traffic, and they don't make it to where the ground zero is, so they just park their car wherever it happens to be at the time. You know, they're supposed to have the eclipse, and so you have road jammed up and restaurants running out of food. I mean, it's just, at this point, I haven't gained that much excitement to see this, but there's some really people out there that follow this. And in fact, the lady who, who presented it, if, if Indiana has predicted a cloudy day that day, she'll drive to another state that has better weather. She's indicated she would drive all the way to the Texas one to see it, but.
And we're also anticipating that rather remote spot called the High Point of Indiana.
Yeah, that's, that's on that list.
Okay.
They haven't finalized what they're going to look at, but there's not a whole lot of parking there at that spot.
No, there's not a lot, and, and not a lot of curb parking, curbside parking on those county roads. But so many people who are into visiting every High Point in America.
Be a good day to do it.
Yeah, and they think they'll get a better view of the eclipse if they're at the highest point in Indiana.
Boy, they didn't do their homework.
I mean, but they're the same kind of people who are the geophysical phenomenon, you know, so. Uh, I think the High Point will be a crowded location.
Yeah.
And it's kind of remote and not real wide county roads for parking.
Yeah, six people be a crowded, a crowd out there.
Well, we had, we have hundreds of visitors, you know, you see those reports we get from the Resource Inventory Council.
That's all I have, Jeff.
That's all you have? Okay. Bobby, what do you have?
Um, council will be going to French Lick in September for the meeting, and they're wanting an increase from one thirty to one forty-four.
AIC conference?
And not just council, there'd be a lot of, uh, office holders too.
So it might be a good opportunity to, uh, since, since council is requesting to, uh, go beyond the, the fees that have been set, uh, maybe it's time to raise that limit a little bit, so. That would be a good opportunity to have that discussion.
You know, Orange County, you know, the state of Indiana negotiates a state rate for every county. And I'm guessing Orange County has a negotiated rate that is something under a hundred and forty.
Did they say what, what the cost was?
Um, the, the cheapest one is one forty-four, nine.
One forty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't I just check to see what the Orange County negotiated rate is? Because I've had good luck getting the state negotiated rate in various counties. You know, even though I don't have a state ID, a public.
There's no, there's no hurry either.
I know, I'd, I'd rather just check into.
That's fine.
What's the state negotiated rate? Because the AIC ought to be able to get the Orange County state rate for the AIC.
Why don't you go ahead and do that and report back to us?
Thank you.
Ron, I gave you what we got in the mail today from, uh, the Bureau of Prisons, Department of Corrections, whatever they, the state prison system is called. And apparently, a, an inmate, uh, passed away while in prison. And a, uh, an autopsy needed to be performed. And this prisoner came from Wayne County, and so they've sent us a bill for the autopsy, so.
Ah.
And that's by state statute, according to that letter, but.
It sounds very bureaucratic, the governmental, so it's probably.
It does, doesn't it? And it's what, about six hundred dollars or?
It's what?
Six thousand.
Fifty-two thirty-four.
Fifty-two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, autopsy is five thousand, that's a little higher than.
So if they execute a prisoner in Terre Haute, do we, are we responsible?
Well, that's a federal prison, so.
I know, but I just wonder how deep this runs.
Maybe the state is, I don't know, but I don't think we are, but, but for state prisoners who pass away while in prison, apparently, statute calls for us to pay for the autopsy, so.
So we have a fiscal, fiscal impact on all life sentences, so counties have to bear.
Well, I don't know if it was a life sentence or not. It just turned out that way.
But it turned out to be that way.
It may have been three to five, and it turned out to be life. So anyway, not, not to make light of the passing of this gentleman.
No, but I have no idea that was a county responsibility.
I had never heard of that, that's why I've passed it on to Ron. I don't think we need to take action today, but we'll need to come up with some money.
I think I'll talk to Stephanie Jaeger about that, get Pardon to Thormburg to look into that for the General Assembly's wishlist.
Seems like once they're in the state system, it ought to be a state expense, but.
Especially if there is some negligence or whatever. I mean, if it's the culpability.
It doesn't imply that, certainly, but, uh.
Do they do autopsies on every prisoner that dies in custody?
I don't know. I don't know. Okay, so Ron will check on that and get back with us. We'll need to figure out, uh, how we're going to pay for that, if in fact he agrees it's, uh, an expense we need to pick up. Utility payments by credit card. So, Mark, uh, this issue of utility payments by credit card has come up again, and we have, uh, tried to avoid doing that, but we are getting late fees now, uh, and.
Can you tell me where they are?
Uh, this is one of ours, isn't it, Bobby?
Yeah, well, from the EDC, it was, I want to say Comcast, maybe? I'd have to look and double check.
Comcast is generally, okay. Show me where it is, and I'll take a look at it. How, when does my office get it?
Um, you got it on, I believe it was the fifth, um, because the bill goes to EDC, and then EDC emails over to me. The day I got it, I printed it, took it to Jeff to sign it, took it to Linda. She printed a check that day for it. So it was less than twenty-four turnaround, and it was still late. By the time it got to us.
Okay, so it's not when it gets to my office?
No, it's a matter of the timing of being able to pay the bill.
Okay.
That's why we've always paid up my credit card until this recent one.
Well, if you had a twenty-four hour turnaround, you're not going to get much better than that on anything.
Well, except that however long it takes to get the, the payment then from your office to, to them. And with the credit card, it's immediate.
Let me look at it and see what you have, so I can get a timeline on when things occurred.
But again, this is, this is not going to be an isolated incident, in my opinion. And they're going to be coming in from several departments, uh, and so we need to get a handle on this. That's why we went to credit card payment of utility bills in the past, and, uh, it's.
I'm not going to venture an answer, because I don't know.
I understand, I understand.
Just let me take a look at it.
Electric utilities suspended late payments during COVID, uh, a great deal. And I do not know that they are trying to recover their losses from that suspension of late fees, but I know it hurt them probably, because late fees have been a traditional source of income from, uh, electric utilities that have traditionally collected, I'm sure a certain percentage of their income has been from those who pay utility bills late. And simultaneously, this is just anecdotal, but my due date, um, time from when I received my Duke bill to when it is due has shrunken significantly.
About twenty days.
Yeah, I, I, mine was twelve days. I, from the date I received my electric utility bill.
Yeah, from the date you receive it.
Right.
From the billing date to the due date is twenty days.
But, but.
But it usually takes a week to get it from there.
Right, and they say allow five to ten days for, so if I pay my utility bill by mail on the day. on the day I receive it, I can still get a late fee.
Sure.
Now, I'm not saying they're trying to recover their losses by having to suspend it during COVID, but it seems kind of coincidental. So this is another reason, I think, why we really need to be able to pay some of these utility Comcast kind of bills by credit card.
If you pay it by the credit card, now I write the check for the credit card, that time period will be longer than if, when you receive the bill, you give it, you're not going to get it faster than that one day.
But we will avoid late charges and the late charges are costing us money. And that's our goal, is to avoid late charges.
The credit card companies don't typically have a short turnaround time as the utilities do.
Right.
They give you longer to process the payment typically.
And credit card companies didn't have to suspend late fees.
And if we, you know, even if we had a late fee, it would be one instead of probably 37.
And I don't think we're getting late fees on credit cards.
Used to.
So at any rate, we're asking you to look into that and...
Just give me the bill.
We'll get that information to you.
And the timeline from the day it was received by whoever got it.
Okay, Mark?
No.
Have you got anything for us?
No, I don't.
Okay. We will let you know the next time that Dunn and Associates is here so that you can make sure to sit in on those conversations. And that should be in the not-too-distant future as we...
Well, I got something from them today, I haven't read it yet, so I don't know what that is.
Okay. I think that's all I have on my agenda. Anything else from anybody?
It confirmed that Sheriff Redd, or I guess it's been out of the office for a period of time, but before he left, he did receive a copy of the signed QCC County Health, Inmate Healthcare Contract. So I said, Mr. Pulcher needs a copy and I'd like to have a copy and Bobby'd like to have a copy, so we will get those. But that is something I was kind of concerned about.
That took a while to get that, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So that's good and I do have some concerns in the commissary account.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I have a request. We've been talking about this for years since the commissioners changed the name of the Main Street Bridge to the Dr. Mary Thomas Bridge to honor the physician who not only was a Civil War doctor, but also was National President of Women's Suffrage Association and established, and she was the Richmond, official Richmond physician in the 19th century. And that dedication is scheduled for Saturday, August 26th, which is the anniversary of the Women's Suffrage Certification, allowing women to vote. And now we've, we're a little bit nervous about the bronze foundry because like everybody else, there've been delays and labor shortages in the foundry, but we will be receiving the marker to go on the west side of the Main Street Bridge, making it the Dr. Mary Bridge, in early August, in time for the August 26th christening of the bridge. And of course, there remains, just because we'll have the bronze marker, doesn't mean that it will be in place. So in talking with the fields at the City of Richmond, they've asked, since it's a county bridge, if the county could install the sign. Their Department of Public Works, as you know, is working hard. And so they said, since it's a county bridge and a county changed the name of the bridge from Bridge 209 or whatever it was, you know, we didn't have a marker for Bridge 209 that they would ask, so I'm asking permission for me to ask Mike Sharp to install that in August.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Is that okay? I didn't want to go to Mike without...
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and ask him.
And we now have a time, didn't want to set a time until we made sure that was still okay with the Lieutenant Governor who chairs, who chaired the Suffrage Centennial Celebration, and she will be doing that dedication at 1:00 that Saturday afternoon. So, Mark, your count?
August 26th.
Saturday, August 26th. Just got that finalized Monday.
All right. Do you have the claims?
Not very many. Bobby, do you know what happened to the regular claims, were those holiday delayed?
I believe so. I know she brought me those while I was at lunch just a little bit ago.
Okay, very few claims. Move for approval of quarterly withholding claims for employees, also the Indiana Department of Revenue withholding, and Boston Mutual Employees Claims.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Also move for approval of the June 28th Commissioners' minutes.
Second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else in front of you? Bobby, we got everything that you're aware of?
Everything I'm aware of.
Ron, anything else from you?
Yeah, we draft, correct a copy of that contract for the...
Correct.
Branding is better.
Yeah, I'd like to get that done as soon as we can, so...
Anything else, CNN's in the team.
Okay. Stephen, anything else? Mark? If not...
I have a question from Mary, but it is done.
We're done.